Good evening.
Good evening. All right. I bring you greetings from the First Fam Legislative Day Committee. We are so happy that you have chosen to join us today. I hope you find the sessions informative, engaging, and motivating. We are here to advocate, make some good trouble, necessary trouble. Dr. King said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." We are here to let our voice be heard.
Thank you, Sora Annette.
All right, so I am Annette Smith Lee, a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Delta Omega Chapter, Petersburg, Virginia. I am the State Coordinator of the Virginia Connections Social Action Committee for the Mid-Atlantic Region. It is my pleasure to bring you greetings. I just want to say thank you to my ride or die co-coordinator of the Virginia Connection and Social Action Committee, Valerie Borkins, all of the connection chairs and representatives, our Mid-Atlantic Regional Connection and Social Action International Representative, Amira Salam, and to our brothers of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, but now our dynamic and awesome Mid-Atlantic Regional Director, Jennifer King Congleton. We want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the 2022 First Fam Legislative Day Program. I just want to say thank you again for all of you for being here today. We invite your attention to our First Fam Legislative Day, 2022 Town Hall, Good Trouble Educating Our Future, K-12 Through Equity and Inclusion. Now, you were here for my co-host, an Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity brother, and he will introduce himself. I'm bringing you greetings, Jerry.
All right, thank you, Sora Annette. And thank everyone for being with us tonight. It is truly a privilege to be with everyone for this awesome event. As Sora Annette said, I am Jerry Fitz, the Virginia Association of Chapters of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, or better known as BACAPATH. I am the Chair of our SAPEA Committee. SAPEA stands for Sociological, Economic, Political Involvement, and Action. I am a member of the Z Delta Lambda Chapter, which is seated in Henrico County, Virginia, and I was initiated at the New Theta Chapter located at Old Dominion University. We welcome all of you this evening to this program that will enlighten, educate, and I'm sure in some certain moments will entertain you as we all learn together. There have been many hands on the wheel that have helped us plan and organize in an effort to get us here tonight. I also want to thank the sororities of the Mid-Atlantic Region of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and all of my Alpha brothers that worked hard to make our legislative events a reality again this year. We want tonight's event to be a nonpartisan look at the issues surrounding education in the K through 12 space, and we encourage you during the appropriate times to share your comments and questions. And with that being said, I will turn it back over to my Sora Annette so that she may introduce our first convener of the evening.
Thank you, Jerry. Please let me introduce you, Ms. Jennifer King Congleton. She was elected Mid-Atlantic Regional Director in 2018. She has promised to do a new thing. Since that time, she has established several new initiatives, such as the Mid-Atlantic Regional Leadership Institute, the Undergraduate Semperium, the First Regional Spiritual Care Team, and we started the First Fam Partnership at the suggestion, under her leadership, combining the AKAs and Alphas to present this program. Jennifer King Congleton has sincere passion for Alpha Kappa Alpha that has helped her sustain and maintain a lively sisterhood throughout the region, even through this pandemic. She is an active person in the community and engaged in activities of Alpha Kappa Alpha. She treasured the time to spend with her family, especially with her son and granddaughter. Our very own Mid-Atlantic Regional Director, who has done a new thing for the marvelous Mid-Atlantic Region. Ms. Jennifer King Congleton.
Good evening, and thank you, Annette. You are absolutely wonderful, and I thank you for being a part of this. On behalf of the members of the Virginia Chapters of the Mid-Atlantic Region of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, I'd like to say, and the Virginia Association of Chapters of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, our brothers, I am elated to welcome you to the 2022 joint venture of the two organizations. It has blessed many people over the last few years. I want to thank Annette Smith Lee and Valerie Borkin, Alpha Kappa Alpha members, and their team, who has worked tirelessly, and I say again tirelessly, to plan and execute this advocacy effort. As the Mid-Atlantic Regional Director, I have the privilege of leading college-trained women from the state of North Carolina and the Commonwealth of Virginia, women who care, care about their communities, and take pride in continuing the legacy of our founders for over 114 years. And I can say "over" because it's over that now, over 114 years. We strive, and we do. From the very early years, even before our incorporation, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority recognized the importance of engaging in political and social action. Thus, our rich history of being a major force to address societal concerns regarding the social, political, education, and the economic status of people of color. We are called to be, one, aware of pertinent legislative issues; two, we are called to have knowledge needed to reach informed decisions about who and what to support; and three, take action through advocacy activities that benefit African-American communities and other communities of color. Educating our future through equity and inclusion is our theme for tonight's town hall. I'm reminded of a Chinese proverb, and I'm sure you've heard it, that says it all: "If you are planning for a year, sow rice. If you are planning for a decade, plant trees. If you are planning for a lifetime, educate people." There are many ways that we can make an impact on the world, but there is no greater impact, no greater impact, that you can make than spreading education and empowering people who will empower and teach our children, who in turn will empower and teach more. I say to you, Alpha family, First Fam, thank you. Thank you to the sisters and the brothers for capturing this vision for this partnership. Let's continue to rock Good Trouble. Back to you.
So much, Madam Regional President, excuse me, Madam Regional Director. We certainly appreciate those words, and we certainly appreciate your partnership and the opportunity for us to come together again and have this event. It is my esteemed pleasure to introduce our District Seven Director, Brother Fred Scott. Brother Fred Scott is a native of Richmond, Virginia. His aspiration has always been to educate and make a difference with children and adults. After high school, he completed a bachelor's degree from Hampton University, a master's degree from Columbia University, and received endorsement certifications from Virginia Commonwealth University, as well as Virginia State University. In his professional career of 33 years in K through 12 education, he served as an elementary teacher, middle school mathematics teacher, department chair, technology trainer, staff developer, elementary support administrator, instructional technology specialist, elementary principal, and professional development specialist. He earned Teacher of the Year and REB Awards during his tenure as a teacher. Brother Scott currently serves as a senior business education consultant for Power School, promoting the best practices in talent management solutions. Brother Scott was initiated on February the 12th, excuse me, February the 28th, 1981. He crossed to the fraternity at the Gamma Iota Chapter at Hampton University with 11 exceptional men. Brother Fred Scott married his childhood best friend Paulette, and they have two children, Neil and Whitney, both born on the exact same day, three years apart. I present to you our District Director, Brother Fred Scott.
Wonderful introduction. I didn't expect all of that. And to my sorority sisters of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Brothers, Brother Fitz, and to our sisters, y'all have done a phenomenal job. And before I get started, Brother Fitz, Brother Clanton, and Brother Love, thank you for representing our district to help this event to be successful. And to the sorority sisters, and Jennifer, you got a great group of sororities, and they have made this happen. And we'd like to say to everybody who's out there, to our brothers, our sisters, and all participants, thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for being at this town hall event. The Virginia Association of Chapters of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, the 36 chapters I represent, we are proud and honored to serve with you. And I thank the sororities from the Mid-Atlantic Region because our partnership has been one of stellar example for all organizations and for all chapters and even our partnerships. So between Alpha Phi Alpha and Alpha Kappa Alpha, we were the first Greek-letter collegiate African-American organization established. So, but when we were established, we were established by founders who said "The betterment of African-Americans are important to us." And that partnership has led to reaching out to our communities, and that vision, both organizations, is living up to by our founding. Tonight, the theme, which is an area of passion of mine, which is education. Educating our future, K-12 Through Equity and Inclusion, focuses on education for the most important resource, which is our children. My fraternity has always focused on scholarship, and one of our aims of the fraternity, which tonight we're still doing, is that diving deeper into the status of education in Virginia. And where we want to go, into the future, to support our children. We truly believe in the future of education, and we gotta prepare the next generation. We are confident that tonight's discussion will allow us to move the needle in a positive direction. Let me tell you about BACAPATH. We have been trying to move, we have been moving that needle continuously by educating and mentoring our youth. We've partnered with many organizations to get that done. We have a program called "Go to High School, Go to College", and we have been implementing that with all 36 of our chapters. We took it a step forward in our district, where it was important about the education of our younger students. So we have an elementary initiative where we've been providing books for K through five students. And over the last three years, we've given over 1,700 books to students of need. And for our high school and college students, our district has supported a half a billion dollars in scholarships in the past three years. So I give kudos to my brothers about what they have been doing out there, which is phenomenal work. I want to say thank you, every person who's been a part of this for what you have done. Sororities and brothers, we couldn't do this without you. And again, tonight, everyone online and everyone on different platforms that has joined us, we hope that you find this information, it's helpful and enlightening, and make sure we go back into our communities to help teach one, pull one. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Regional Director, Ms. Jennifer King Congleton, and Brother Fred Scott. Now, our moderators for today are Ms. Tracy Desasia, who is the former Deputy Secretary for the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we have Mr. Daquan Love, who is the sixth Executive Director of the Virginia State Conference NAACP. Now, I will turn it over to the moderators.
Thank you so much for those greetings and warm introductions. Good evening, and again, welcome to the 2022 Virginia First Fam Legislative Day Town Hall, Educating Our Future Through Equity and Inclusion. Again, I'm Tracy Desasia, a proud member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Alpha Phi Omega Chapter, and I have the distinct pleasure of serving as one of your moderators this evening. As you engage in tonight's program, you're encouraged to follow us @VAFirstFam across social media platforms. You're also encouraged to actively join in the conversation by using the hashtag #VAFirstFam. This is an active event, so we ask that you join in the discussion by placing your comments and questions in the chat box on either Facebook or YouTube, whichever platform you're viewing tonight's event on. You should know that throughout the discussion, we may periodically elevate those questions and comments, so be sure to remain active in the chat. While you're in there, be sure to share your name and your organizational affiliation, if it applies, just so we'll know who's joining us this evening. You can also engage with the Virginia First Fam by emailing us at info@vafirstfam.com. As a reminder, tomorrow, members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated will keep the conversation going by engaging with legislators and administration representatives. Registrants should be on the lookout for both a survey and a know-before-you-go correspondence in their inboxes detailing what they should expect for tomorrow's legislative day. We're kicking off the evening with a discussion on the current state of education in Virginia, but we know that Virginia has a long and rich history with education being a central focus. On April 23rd, 1951, Barbara Johns, a 16-year-old high school girl in Prince Edward County, Virginia, led her classmates in a strike to protest the substandard conditions at Robert Rusomoten High School. Her idealism of planning and persistence ultimately garnered the support of the NAACP lawyers Spotswood Robinson and Oliver Hill to take up the calls and the calls of more equitable conditions for Moten High School. After meeting with the students and the community, lawyers Spotswood Robinson and Oliver Hill filed suit at the federal courthouse in Richmond, Virginia. The case was called Davis v. Prince Edward. And in 1954, the Farmville case became one of five cases that the United States Supreme Court reviewed in Brown versus Board of Education of Topeka, when it declared segregation unconstitutional. Moving forward to 2019, Governor Northam created the African-American History Education Commission, asking the group to review our African-American history in the Commonwealth, how it was being taught, upon recognizing that in many instances, it was both inadequate and inaccurate. Since then, we've seen a movement of sorts, a movement of what many would consider a rollback on that progress, with school board meetings becoming contentious and conversations on book bans and masking and critical race theory consuming the discussion. Marian Wright Edelman once said that "Education is a precondition to survival in America today." Let that serve as a backdrop for today's discussion. We are joined by Dr. James Fetterman, a choral music teacher from Acomet County, who became the first African-American male educated to lead, excuse me, elected to lead the Virginia Education Association. Since the merger of the VEA and the Historically Black Virginia Teachers Association in 1967, VEA has had three African-American women elected to the presidency, but Fetterman is the first black man elected as either vice president or president. Next, we have Dr. Janice Underwood. As a national expert in diversity leadership with the Strategic Plan for Reconciliation Across Multiple Sectors, Dr. Janice Bell Underwood has more than 25 years of public service. Dr. Underwood has championed to make systemic inequity visible in government and education sectors as a state official, a university administrator, teacher, educator, researcher, National Board Certified Teacher, and diversity trainer. Dr. Underwood collaboratively created the One Virginia Plan, the first-ever statewide diversity strategic framework aimed at building affirming work, learning, economic, and social environments for the Commonwealth of Virginia as a roadmap for continued access and success for the state, other states, and the nation. Next, we're joined by Dr. Amy Gadera. Virginia Governor Glenn Youngkin selected Amy Gadera to serve as the next Secretary of Education for the Commonwealth of Virginia. Amy Gadera is the former president and CEO of the Data Quality Campaign, a national nonprofit organization leading the effort to empower educators, students, parents, and policymakers with the information they need to make the best decisions to improve student outcomes. Amy believes that data has the power to transform education to ensure every child in this country is prepared for success in college and careers. Rounding out our panel is Ms. Pamela Croon. Pamela Croon was a candidate for at-large representative on the Hampton School Board in Virginia. She was defeated in the general election that was held on May 3, 2016. Mrs. Croon works in the Economic Development Office for the City of Hampton. She has also worked in the City Manager's Office and the Hampton Fire Marshal's Bureau. She has been involved with the PTA for 26 years and currently serves as the President of the Hampton PTA Council. Her other volunteer activities include volunteering with the Tide Mill Mashin Community Association and the Downtown Hampton Exchange Club. Croon has received two Virginia PTA Lifetime Honorary Memberships, the Virginia PTA President's Award, and the Hampton City Schools Title I Promoter of Excellence Award. She also has been named one of tomorrow's leaders by Sister to Sister and appointed to the 2014 All-American City Team of Representatives for the City of Hampton. Again, welcome to our panelists. To ensure we are able to address as many questions as possible, we ask that you keep your responses to one to two minutes, if you're able to. We know that could be a bit challenging because we are all passionate about our children. We also ask that, as you're comfortable, you share your contact information so that the audience members may know the best way to... so that the audience members may know the best way to continue to engage with you. As we begin our discussion, we will do so by centering our children through equity and inclusion. So, Dr. Fetterman, it's good to see you, friend. I would like to start the discussion with you, and we're just going to jump right into it. Critical race theory. So it's permeated and in many ways dominated discussions at school board meetings across the Commonwealth and the nation. So what is it and why are some Virginians so concerned about it?
Good evening, and thank you so much for having me on. I I want to get started by just saying critical race theory does not exist in our public schools. It is a term that has been used in a very divisive manner. And simply with all we're asking for is that our our students learn the truth. Education in Virginia students, it it should be rooted in facts and truth, and even if some of those are difficult facts at times. And even if some of those truths are unfortunate truths about the history in Virginia, our students should be able to learn that and and be taught critical thinking skills so that they can move forward. But as we as we continue to understand this, it it's it's really a term that's really putting parents against educators, and we have to find a way to bring back the true system of engaging, and that is parent-teacher conferences, schools have open door policies. But to be very clear and precise, critical race theory does not exist in our public schools.
Thank you so much for offering that context, Dr. Fetterman. So what I'm hearing is critical thinking and not critical race theory, and so we're certainly taking our notes this evening. Dr. Underwood, my good friend, my former colleague and sister, you have the distinct pleasure of having served as the Commonwealth and the nation's first cabinet-level chief diversity officer. In the context of diversity, equity and inclusion as a practice, how is equity defined and how can equity be applied to our K through twelve schools? Can you speak to that and perhaps a bit about your work?
Thank you, Tracy, and it's so good to be with you and see you again. I want to quickly just say, if I could talk about equity from the perspective of what my good friend James said, that's the reason why people are so afraid of the word critical race theory, because it does take into this context of equity and giving people, including students, our most vulnerable, what they need to to thrive and achieve and and giving people what they need, right? Virginians are afraid of it because they don't truly understand it. Issues of race and equity continue to be an area we don't feel comfortable talking about it, which is why I'm really excited about today's town hall. I know people don't want to say the wrong thing. They don't want people to know how much you don't really know. You don't want to make a mistake or be called a racist or be called angry or disgruntled. So that's why this is a difficult conversation, but my hope is that people can differentiate and understand diversity, equity, inclusion more broadly and understand what CRT or Critical Race Theory is and isn't, and stop being so frightened by those who take advantage of the fact that many of us don't know what we don't know. And legislators, policymakers, parents, we need to be able to define it and use it in a sentence, just like our third grade vocabulary list, right? You define a word and you use it in a sentence. So listen up. I'm going to build from what James said. Critical race theory is a legitimate theoretical framework that comes out of the critical theory scholarship. It is a research methodology at the postgraduate level used to examine the way systems of race and racism were legally used to create inequity in all of our systems and formally informal policies and practices, which is why Governor Northam created this position of the Commonwealth's Chief Diversity Officer and the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. We have inherited and precedents of those legal decisions made generations ago, but they're still with us. And so equity is really about thinking, how do we give people what they need so that they can access opportunity? And without equity, there is no opportunity. I'm excited about opportunity and making sure there's opportunity for all, and you can't do that without going straight through equity.
Oh, very well said, Dr. Underwood. Thank you so much for that. And so again, equity is about giving people what they need, right? Not necessarily, you know, making, giving, distributing our resources equally, right? Because we know that if you do it equally, it doesn't necessarily give people exactly what they need of recognizing that everyone has a different starting point. Wonderful. So, Mrs. Croons, I want to to turn to you. I would love to 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 have your perspective as well. And we're going to take the conversation in a bit of a different direction. We know that the pandemic has hurt our children significantly. From challenges with socialization, the onset of anxiety, depression and other mental health challenges, languishing learning are all being impacted in ways that one could argue that only time will tell how our children are being impacted from all of this and being in a pandemic pandemic now for its third year. Are you aware of how these challenges are being addressed or will they be addressed?
Well, thank you for having Virginia PTA represented and the parent voice represented this evening on that on this town hall this evening. And we think that everyone is trying to address what's happening in our schools. We 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 find that all of our partners, our education partners are all working very hard to work together to try to address the the various gaps that are persistent in our schools. But one of the things that we think that needs to have more attention is the critical staffing shortages and actually funding the standards of quality, providing those essential staff that should be prescribed for every school to address exactly what you said, unify, you know, having those unified mental health teams at the nationally recommended ratios, having our professional school nurses for every school and full-time principals for every elementary schools. A lot of people would be shocked to know that some of our schools have part-time principals. There's no such thing as a part-time principal. There's no such thing as a part-time school, so we really need to have full-time principals in our buildings to help address some of those needs that our students are facing and our parents being able to bring that family engagement and involvement into our schools. And so addressing those concerns and when it comes to our our libraries and our technical education teachers and having those for all of our elementary schools, I think are those things that would help well round our school communities.
Excellent perspective. Thank you so much for sharing that and especially for highlighting the staffing shortages. We have seen what we will call creative solutions across the Commonwealth as well as across the nation. In states, certainly on the West Coast, even deploying the National Guard to fill in to serve as substitute teachers. And we know that our our children are really best positioned when they have those trained individuals there in the classrooms educating them. But this is a challenge that we're all grappling with. So thank you for elevating that concern. Madam Secretary, first, congratulations on your new post. We wish you all the best of luck as you and your and your team take the reins. We know that Governor Youngkin made education a focus of his campaign. Can you speak to you and the governor's focus on K-12 schools? Additionally, can you speak to the governor's desire to really leverage and center charter schools as a part of his efforts as well?
Sure. Thank you so much, and I'm excited to be here tonight. So thanks so much for the kind invitation and to be part of this panel. And I look forward to continuing conversations after this as well. So Governor Youngkin talked a whole lot about education on the campaign trail, and it's been a priority as he's as he started into his his term. And it's because it's critical to his end goal of making Virginia being the greatest place to work, live and raise a family. And as you all said in the wonderful introduction, education is the most important thing to making all of those things possible. You know, I am the product of a great public school education, and that should not be the exception. It should be the norm for every single child in this country and especially in this Commonwealth. And that's why I'm so excited to be the Secretary of Education. We are focused very much on restoring excellence for every single child, and restoring also may not be the right term because for lots of communities, there hasn't been excellent education. And one of the things that we're going to be spending a lot of time on is getting better at being transparent about which schools and which students are are being well-served and which are not. And the conversation you all just had, the three prior panelists we're talking about, is we just need to have a clearer picture and use information in a way, and like I say all the time, how do we use information as a flashlight and not just as a hammer to make sure that we're identifying where there are areas that we're not serving every child, that we're not having the teachers that are trained and are experienced to be able to help the kids that are furthest behind? How do we make sure we look at where the buildings that are not up to code and that we need to be putting more resources into? How do we identify where those issues are? And how do we ensure that we are helping to serve every single community and every single child to make sure that they're prepared, not just for college, not just for career, but for life? Because this is the critical piece of ensuring that we have a strong democracy. It's making sure that we have people prepared to be engaged members of of the democracy and of the economy and of their communities. And that's also tonight what this program is all about, right? Is civically civic engagement, being informed citizens and being know-how to be engaged in your communities and in the economy. So what you're going to see from the Youngkin administration is a focus on empowering people with good information, empowering them with good choices, empowering them with quality options so that they so that we can make sure that we are preparing every single learner from early childhood through post-secondary and into the workforce for success. And to your question about charter schools, this is one of the pieces that we think is critical because we know from the data that students are not all being served well. And that's the topic of your conversation about equity of opportunity. And we're going to make sure that we have greater opportunities for that quality education. Charter schools and these innovation schools, we know from studies across the country that when students are given access to these public schools that are have set performance measures and metrics that they are held accountable to, that that outcomes improve. And so you'll see us in the legislature and in conversations with communities, talking a lot about ensuring that we have more choices within public education led by local school divisions that make sure that we are serving every single child and every single family. But thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, Madam Secretary, and for giving a bit more context and clarity to the focus of the administration. I want to kind of remain on two main themes this evening as I pose just a few more questions to our panelists. That is a theme of safety, because there's been a lot of conversation around safety and what is most appropriate for our students, especially as we continue to grapple with the COVID nineteen pandemic. And then curriculum, curriculum development, who's teaching what, how they're teaching it. And so I still want to stay there. And so would love to ask each of our panelists, can you speak to just your knowledge of, number one, how curriculum is actually developed and actually implemented in practice in our schools? Each of you have varying levels of experience with this. And so the first part of that question is about curriculum. And then the second part of the question that I would love for you to address is, how do we balance curriculum and ensuring that we're doing our best to address learning loss while simultaneously balancing our children's safety? So I'll start with you, Dr. Fetterman.
Thank you so much for that question. You know, to to put this in perspective from from my seat, you know, our students have experienced learning loss since the beginning of time, and for many of them, it's called summer break. But one thing that our educators do extremely well, and that is to establish where their students are, they assess them, they reteach, they revisit, and they bring the students to to a level of proficiency at or above grade level. But one of the things that that's that that's really concerning, since I have been in this position, many of the the decision makers for issues around curriculum, curriculum development, there are no people of color on those committees. So when we talk about being inclusive, we need to be at the table because, you know, decisions are being made for us, about us, without us. And that is not, that's not a healthy Commonwealth. And our students across the Commonwealth, they're doing well. And one of the things that I have to, I have to shine the light brighter on is our educators did a phenomenal job in the midst of a global pandemic without professional development, without a playbook, without any resources to make it happen. And they were able to keep learning going for our students in many of the most vulnerable communities. And these communities that have been extremely vulnerable, guess what? They were extremely vulnerable before COVID. Many of these communities did not have what they needed to be successful prior to COVID. And and one of the pieces that's missing is a seat at the table for those individuals who are able to give a perspective. And since this administration, you know, we've we're trying to forge that path for with having a conversation. And I'm hopeful that it will happen one day, but it hasn't happened yet.
Thank you so much for sharing that perspective, Dr. Fetterman. It's actually been said that if you don't have a seat at the at the table, you're on the menu. And so having that seat is certainly important. Would love for you to engage perhaps in the chat as we transition to our next panel shortly. How do we get those seats at the table? Where should we be sitting? So, Dr. Underwood, want to turn things over to you to address either part of that question on curriculum development in the Commonwealth and then balancing curriculum with the safety of our students as well.
Well, I I appreciate that, and I've been an actual teacher, an administrator, a policymaker. I believe in public education and and quite candidly am vehemently opposed to privatization of of public education. So that's where myself and Amy differ. But what I will tell you is that the way that curriculum is created is really through that pipeline of educators identifying what the standards are at the Virginia Department of Education and more nationally, U.S. Department of Education, and then we take that information and we funnel it down to school districts. We have a hundred and thirty-two school districts that really have control locally over the the management of the of those schools. But then we also have to adopt textbooks. And it's my great hope that more teachers and educators have more say and seats at the table of what curriculum and what the standards are and which materials are appropriate. But then there are educators who are culturally competent that understand that everything that's in the standards isn't the whole story. And so we have to create a more complete narrative. And I, as you mentioned at the top of the conversation, Tracy, that that was where the Commission for the African American History came in and even the Commission to Examine Racial Inequity in the Virginia Code, all of the recommendations from these historical unprecedented commissions, they need to go forward because there is a an algorithm that has already been created by so many voices across Virginia saying, this is what we need, this is what needs to be taught, this is where we have forgotten the contributions of so many. And equity means, like we said, giving people what they need. And you can't have that opportunity without giving people the curriculum that tells that whole story.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. I'll certainly pause for a moment, Secretary Gadera or Mrs. Croons, if you wanted to jump in on this as well. So we'll give you a moment, and then we would love to elevate at least one question from our chat.
Well, thank you, Tracy. I would like to say our goal is to create a more welcoming and inclusive and safe school community for all of our students and our staff and our families. We encourage everyone to take steps to learn about and disrupt and disrupt their own unconscious biases. I mean, that is one of the core missions of PTA is bridging home and school, giving parents voices, helping them to understand school processes and giving them the opportunity to be involved. We also invite in the community large. What a lot of communities don't understand is just because you don't have a child in school does not mean that you don't have a voice or that you shouldn't be concerned about what's being, what's happening in our schools. And so, but we do leave those big decisions to those decision makers, understanding that our elected officials are the experts in that field, but our job is to bring the community in and to be a partner in our schools.
And I'll just add, sorry, and I'll just add quickly that two things. One, you know, stakeholder voice matters incredibly, right? There are two things that how you make good decisions. One, having good information and evidence about what works. And we have increasingly good evidence about things, especially around curriculum, around standards, around textbooks and around teacher training and teacher development. We're getting more and better information about what works, and our children just deserve that. They deserve to know about what books work, what which teaching styles work. So we have that information. We need to employ that. And we need to couple that with human judgment and with input from people closest to kids, right? So teachers need to be involved, communities be involved, parents, students themselves need to be involved. And you'll see this in the work that we're doing in education, that we are going to have a lot of public comment and a lot of input on everything that we do to make sure that people's voices are heard. That has been a theme that we will continue, that started on the campaign, that will continue of input and being responsive to the needs of parents and being responsive to communities. And you know, one size does not fit all, which is why I'll also say charter schools, innovation lab schools, locally innovation lab schools, locally created schools and materials are important. And Dr. Underwood, I just want to really be clear, this is not the privatization of education. This is about using public resources to hold public schools and to create the best public schools possible and holding them accountable to the public. So it's all about the public and our children deserve the best and that can happen in public schools. I'm a big believer in public schools and we need to make them as strong as possible using evidence and the input of stakeholders.
Thank you, Secretary, and thank you all for sharing your perspectives. We recognize that we do have different perspectives. But at the end of the day, it's our children that we want to ensure remain centered in this conversation. So with that being said, we did have a few questions that were elevated in the chat. We want to make sure we get to at least one of those before we have to transition. So Carlos, back in our green room, I do want to see if you can bring up just at least one of those questions. It looks like you have one there on the screen forwards. And that question is from Jay. The question is, how can our communities assist teachers and schools to bridge the gap between the end of one school year to the beginning of the next? That is an excellent question. And I'll start with you, Dr. Fetterman, for that one.
Thank you so much. And I think that the quick answer to that is ultimately community schools. When community schools are truly engaged, community schools have the ability to offer wraparound services. Community schools is like a one-stop shop. You can get everything you need from that school. I don't care if it's help from a social worker, whether it's school nutrition, whether it's school health, whether it's before or after-school care. Wraparound services are so important for our students. And that is one of the greatest mechanisms we have to mitigate much of the learning loss that our students experience when they transition from summer back to, you know, regular school. So when our parents actually get involved, that actually minimizes the threat that it's the school against the parent or the teacher against the parent. There is a lot of collaboration that truly happens and it truly breaks the barrier of many misunderstandings and misconceptions that parents have, that teachers have. You know, Dr. James Comer said, no significant learning takes place without a meaningful relationship. Meaningful relationships can happen in public schools. You don't need charter schools for that. They can happen in our public schools. And I believe we make greater progress by investing in the system that we have already have in place that's been tried and true, and that is children and public education, not privatization.
Thank you so much for that commentary, Dr. Fetterman. This evening, so far, we have discussed safety in schools, we've discussed curriculum development, we've discussed critical race theory, and certainly all of this is centered on equity and inclusion and ensuring that we are educating our future with those in mind. Panelists, as we close out, I ask that you share with this evening's participants, parents, grandparents, future parents, siblings, and those vested in supporting our children, how they can stay connected to this issue, K through 12 education, again, educating our future through equity and inclusion. How can they let their voices be heard and remain in the conversation? So I'll start with you, Mrs. Croons. How can our participants this evening, parents, future parents, grandparents alike, remain in this conversation?
Absolutely. Join your local school PTA. The vast majority of our schools have PTAs and we are always open and looking for your voice, your volunteerism, your support of the school, if it's just helping out. It's about being present. So get involved with your local PTA today. I'll be more than happy to connect you with any of our local PTAs around the state. We are here to help. Once again, we're here to bridge the homeschool connection. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that ask and that call to action. Let's just say that we expect your membership to increase. And so just be on the watch, be on the lookout for those numbers going up after tonight. All right, Dr. Underwood, how can our parents, our future parents, grandparents, siblings, and other family members alike let their voices be heard and remain in this conversation?
Well, the first thing I would say is support our teachers. Our teachers are leaving the profession in droves because of the politicization and the sort of ethos that public education has taken on by a very minority monster machine of people yelling and screaming at school board meetings. But also have a say and demand that American Rescue Plan funds be used at the local level to support learning loss that, you know, it was talked about earlier. All of our school systems have received millions of dollars. Localities have received millions of dollars from American Rescue Plan funds with the words equity listed on it to help everyone get what they need, right? Demand that those dollars be used in constructive and transformative ways to help our most vulnerable. And then the last thing is support legislation that really has genuine equity and inclusion embedded in it and not divisive sort of manifestations. In particular, Senator Locke has Senate Bill 153 that she is patroning. And I support Senate Bill 153. That makes the Chief Diversity Officer Full Secretary. Those are the kinds of genuine diversity, equity, and inclusion manifestations in our Virginia Code that we need, that parents should support so that this work can continue transformatively. And so I look forward to getting my voice heard at the local level, state level, and federal level. And you can do that by public comment in our school board meetings, our governor's advisory boards. I know, Tracy, you are very familiar with leading those. We should not stop. We should continue to elevate those boards because they represent 8.5 million Virginians across all dimensions of diversity. And so we just need to continue to stay active because this is our state. And this is, if we want to get closer to the one Virginia mission and vision that we started in the Northern administration, that's how we do it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that call to action, Dr. Underwood. Dr. Fetterman, how do we ensure that our voices remain in this conversation?
Absolutely. I just continuously encourage all parents to visit your child's school, have conversations with your child's teacher. You know, if you have a question, comment, concern, or even a short speech, reach out. Reach out to have your voice heard. You don't need to send your concern through a governor's tip line. Go to the school. We've always had an open door policy and we continuously encourage those courageous conversations, even if we don't agree. We can continue to do what is right and what is best for our children. And I say it often, our children are like credit cards. We can pay now or we can pay later. My name is James Fetterman and I approve this message.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that. And Madam Secretary, how can we ensure that the participants joining us this evening can remain in the conversation?
So I agree with so much of what my fellow panelists said from being engaged in the PTA and going to your parent-teacher conferences and going to school boards and being actively engaged. But my general response and specific one also is to expect excellence at every level and from every experience, right? Our kids are incredible, right? And so often, that soft bigotry of low expectations is what our system has provided for our children rather than expecting great things from all of them. And so that, to me, is the piece, is that our children are capable of so much and we need to make sure as adults that we are role modeling that expectation and knowing that they're capable of much and doing everything possible to support them. So if you're a mom or a dad or a grandmother or sister or brother, if you just spend time to build that relationship, I think Dr. Fetterman talked about, relationships are critical to this and sending messages and supporting children and giving them opportunities and opening doors. Education is about opening doors and opening opportunity and letting children dream and then helping to understand how they make those dreams possible. And that's what we need to do more of, is making sure that we expect that excellence. But that also means expecting excellence and making sure that you're informed, right? Go in, and if you are an adult in a children's life, ask what's happening in their school. Find out how that child is doing and then ask questions and ensure that your child, that the child that you care about is having access to the best education possible and that make sure that the doors are being opened to them continuously. But thank you so much for all of you all and the fellow panelists. It's been a pleasure and thanks for the passion that's epitomized on this panel and through the comments in the chat as well. So thank you for including me tonight.
Thank you so much for your comments and your calls to action. We've heard the recommendation to get involved with our local PTA. We've heard the call to support our educators and legislation and building and developing relationships with our children's teachers and all of those involved in the school system. So again, I just want to say thank you to our panelists, Dr. James Fetterman, Dr. Janice Underwood, Mrs. Pamela Croons, and Secretary Amy Gudera. We appreciate your time and willingness to share your insight and commitment in educating our future through equity and inclusion. I will now turn things over to Mr. Daquan Love, Executive Director of the Virginia State Conference in NAACP. Daquan, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Tracy, and thank you to that phenomenal panel that we just had. I don't know about you, but I am very excited and fired up with even more tools and resources now to advocate on behalf of our children in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Thank you again, Tracy, for moderating that first panel. Again, I'm Daquan Marcel Love. I am the Executive Director of the Virginia State Conference in NAACP. You can follow me on Twitter, @DaquanLove. I'm excited to bring up this next dynamic panel of legislators who will be joining us. We're joined by Senator Mamie Locke of the Second District of the Commonwealth of Virginia, State Senate. We're also joined by Delegate Brianna Sewell from the 51st District of the Virginia House of Delegates and Delegate Jeff Born of the 71st District of the Virginia House of Delegates. We are super excited to have these phenomenal legislators and sorors and fraternity brothers on with us this evening. And I would like for us to go ahead and bring them up onto the stage at this time. And I, hello, Delegate Sewell, Senator Locke, how are you doing?
Hi, how are you?
Wonderful and great to see you, Brother Delegate Born. Thank you all for being with us. I know that this is an exciting and interesting time in the life of the General Assembly. So we appreciate you for taking just a few moments of your time to provide us with a few updates, especially as it relates to education. We cannot talk about the education legislation without starting with Senator Mamie Locke, who is serving as a brick wall to ensure that much of the progress that has been made continues to be made and does not move backwards. So I'd love to have Senator Locke to just provide us with a brief primer of the education bills that she's been working on in the State Senate and some of the bills that we're making sure don't get passed as well. Senator Locke, you have the floor.
Thank you, Daquan, and good evening, everyone. And thank you to First Fam, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, my sisters, and my brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. Good evening, everyone. And let me start with Senate Bill 1196, since that seems to have been the culprit that has started a lot of what we see going on this session. Senate Bill 1196 was passed in the 2021 special session. And this bill, as introduced and as passed and signed by Governor Northam, essentially requires, I can't see, so let's do this, requires every person seeking initial licensure or renewal of a license from the Board of Education to complete instruction or training in cultural competency and with an endorsement in history and social sciences to complete instruction in African-American history as prescribed by the Board. The bill also requires each school board to adopt and implement policies that require each teacher and other school board employee holding a license issued by the Board to complete cultural competency training in accordance with guidance issued by the Board at least every two years. So apparently, this is what led some of my colleagues and the current administration to go off on this critical race theory rant. Cultural competency is not critical race theory. Critical race theory is a legal theory that's taught in graduate and law schools. It is not taught in any curriculum in K through 12, 12 in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And to define cultural competency, it is the ability to effectively interact with people from cultures different from their own, especially through a knowledge and appreciation of cultural differences. And I fail to see in that definition what is wrong with individuals being able to interact with children that are different from them, particularly when over 50% of the children now in our public school are Black and Brown children and over 80% of the teachers are white. So why not be culturally competent in trying to gain an understanding of those children who are sitting in those classrooms across from you and understanding, you know, what it is that you are teaching these Black and Brown children? That's what cultural competency means. And so that was taken to mean that now all of a sudden, we want to teach critical race theory in Virginia. And that is certainly not what cultural competency means. So that's what that bill was. And it got off on this whole trajectory of now we want to have critical race theory in Virginia. So that's not what it is.
That's such a really helpful explanation, Senator Locke. And for those that are following us, and I know folks are going to be asking questions and putting your comments in the chat, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Senator Locke, this is no different than working in a corporation and you're required every so often to do sexual harassment training or a cultural competency or diversity training to make sure that you are able to follow those policies. But moreover, as we're talking about educating our children, making sure that our teachers can adequately teach students of all ethnicities and diversities, is that right, Senator?
Correct. For example, I can give you a concrete example of, before my niece graduated from high school, she had a teacher come in the classroom and say to the class, and this is an honors class, and I can't even remember what the topic was, but the teacher said to that class, oh, well, that's why all of you guys are going to be working at 7-Eleven, you know? And didn't understand why those students got angry about him making that statement, you know? Or a teacher coming into the classroom and saying to her students, you know, that's why I don't like working at this ghetto school, you know? And not understanding why the students got angry about her having made that statement, you know? And so if that isn't a call for why cultural competency is needed, and another understanding of what cultural competency means is that at the very least having the tech to understand people and treat them equitably, you know, particularly in an education setting.
Absolutely. This is critical and we are very appreciative of your efforts, Senator Locke, especially in this bill and others. I want to transition for a moment to hear from Delegate Sewell over in the Virginia House of Delegates. Tell me a little bit about some of the education legislation happening on your side of the House.
Thank you for the question. And first off, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with my fellow members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and to the brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. Recently, the Education Committee, which I have the pleasure of serving on with Delegate Jeff Born, recently heard legislation, in particular, I'll reference HB4. House Bill 4 was an effort to roll back the great efforts that had transpired in 2020 by those who were here before me to make sure that we were addressing the school-to-prison pipeline. Here in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we are ranked number one for our connectivity from our school system to our prisons. And there was a great deal of effort that had been underway for over seven years to work to mitigate this. I can speak to the fact that there was a great deal of effort to provide protection for our students to make sure that we were acknowledging their role in the classroom, empowering our teachers to build and further build those relationships with students and empower them, but most importantly, to have honest dialogues within the classroom before it has to go to law enforcement. HB4 was an effort to expand what must be reported to law enforcement from simply felonies to misdemeanors to include any threat that was shared by a student against school personnel, whether that was in the classroom. whether that was in the classroom, on a school sanctioned activity, or on a school bus. And there's also language that required that all matters of sexual assaults were reported to police. As we all know, it's important that we empower our victims of sexual violence, but we also must acknowledge that when addressing the school-to-prison pipeline, we're talking about Black and Brown members of our community, and we are also talking about those with developmental disabilities. And in all three category gories, the Commonwealth of Virginia had not been doing very well and performing well. And again, that was an effort led by our Virginia Legislative Black Caucus and its members to make sure that we were addressing the school-to-prison pipeline in a way that was inclusive of all students and protecting them. And with these recent rollbacks, we have... That sadly passed through the House, although many of us voted against it and spoke against it. There were opportunities to provide additional protections around threats and to make sure that we were actually tying that language to the legal code and actually defining it, whether we're talking about a verbal or physical harm, but most importantly, acknowledging that we are leaving students with developmental disabilities as likely victims of this language. We... There were specific questions that were asked of the Deputy Attorney General of this administration, who specifically noted that there will be no carve-outs for students with developmental disabilities, intellectual disabilities, or social or mental disorders. And as a result, many of us could not stand there, stand by, and silently say that this legislation would be sufficient at this moment in time. The counter perspective was that this legislation had previously passed in a bipartisan fashion. But as we all know, when you know more, you do more, and when you know better, you do better, and that's exactly what myself, Delegate Born, and so many others have done, and we look forward to sending it over to that brick wall that is my dear sorority, Senator Mamie Locke, and her colleagues over in the Senate, who will once again acknowledge the importance of passing legislation and not knowingly allowing for individuals to serve as victims and to allow for opportunities for legislation to be misinterpreted.
While this is a major issue, it seems like with this particular piece of legislation, Delegate Sewell, help folks at home understand, what are the ramifications of rolling this back? How impactful will this be, not just to the current students in our school system now, but how... What are the long-term effects of this as it relates to people not being able to potentially get jobs and these records being on their records for a while?
Well, I think that's a fantastic question, Daquan. I would start off by simply saying, when you look at any portion of the legal code, when there's any piece of legislation that comes before the General Assembly, we are touching a portion of the Virginia State Code that may not be touched again for a generation. So we are applying legislation and trying to alter the life, as well as the vantage points of so many who could be impacted. And just as you noted, this legislation, who knows when we'll have a chance to roll it back. So thank goodness for those in the State Senate who actually recognize the unintended consequences and intended consequences of passing such legislation. We are talking about students receiving records, criminal records, for actions such as simple as a student. I spoke to a father who had a child who was nonverbal at the moment, and therefore, there's often times when he gets frustrated, not because he is angry at anyone for anything, but simply he's frustrated and sometimes may physically act out, not in an effort to harm anyone, but simply because he's trying to communicate. And that can easily be miscommunicated as him threatening someone with physical harm, and therefore, he will now have a record rather than receiving the assistance and the time and the attention that he needs. Also, I know the earlier panel talked about the importance of investing in our teachers and trusting our teachers. So many of our teachers are put in the position now where they're terrified not to report matters, and we are now asking them to over-report at a time when they feel as if they are the political football of this moment. As you saw, they're varying perspectives, and therefore, so many are leaving the educational field because they're tired of it, and that's why we are trying our best to support our teachers, to support our principals, but most importantly, empower our students along the way and their parents. And if we really want to do so, it's not by rolling back such positive legislation.
Well, thank you so much for continuing to stand up for Virginia's children, Delegate Sewell. Delegate Born, I know you have several pieces of legislation, one of which is aimed at standards of quality and as well as making sure that there are full-time principals in our schools, which has been mentioned previously before in this particular session. Many folks may not realize that there are schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia, some of which do not have a full-time principal. So Delegate Born, did you want to talk a little bit about that particular legislation?
Sure, and I just want to shout out the Iceco Brothers, the Alpha Phi Alpha, and the lovely sorority from Alpha Kappa Alpha. It truly is good to be with you all. The bill that you're talking about, Daquan, is really something that we should have been doing a long, long time ago, and that's fully funding our standards of quality. We charge the Board of Education with developing basically an invoice, what it costs to educate children in Virginia in our public school systems. For far too long, the state hasn't met their responsibility, which unfortunately puts stress and strain on localities to try and cover some of those costs, but it really has an impact on the children because, as you said, you know, something like having a principal in your school or having, you know, more counselors, more support staff is critical to the development of our young people. And I think, you know, one of the interesting things about this debate about public education that's going on now is, you know, the governor and his friends would want to invest a whole bunch more money into what they're calling innovative and new, whether you're talking about lab schools or charter schools, and to be quite frank, Senator Locke knows this better than I do, lab schools aren't new, they're not innovative. There's a law in the books that allows them now. But, you know, they suggest that we're not getting the outcomes that we want. Well, what if we invested the way we're supposed to? What if we put those investments that are required of us into our public school systems? What are our outcomes going to be then? We don't know because we've never done it. So I think that bill is extremely important, and I know there's a Senate companion sponsored by Senator McClellan. We'll both have to go to our respective Finance and Appropriations Committees and make the case that we really need to put our money where our mouths are. But just to sort of touch on sort of what I believe is happening with respect to public education, Senator Locke hit on it, and she's much more eloquent than I am, but there's a culture war going on, and our public schools are ground zero, unfortunately. When you look at the attacks on cultural competency, when you look at the attacks on making sure that kids understand that not everyone is equally yoked, and a lot of times that is determined by the color of your skin. You know, it's dog whistle, and it's probably moved beyond dog whistle to an actual whistle that everybody can hear. And, you know, we've got bills that, you know, are going to run into the brick wall that remove race from applications to our governor's schools. You know, they will hold these schools up as beacons of educational excellence, but for some reason, they want to bend over backwards to keep Black and Brown kids from having equitable access and opportunity to go to those schools. So it really is recklessly dangerous, the way that they are using political, public education for politics.
Thank you so much for that, Delegate Born. I'm really excited because we're about to bring up the panelists from the first panel in a few moments, but before we do that, a question that many folks may be thinking of back at home, which is, it is a very hyper-politicized time right now. It's a hyper-partisan time. Is there any good bipartisan education legislation this session? And that question's open to any of our panelists.
Not that I've seen. I would like to address the bill that Dr. Sewell mentioned, the House Bill 4, and the companion bill, the Senate Bill 2, that just came up in the Senate on Thursday in a subcommittee that was recommended not to be reported, but it has to come through the full committee on Thursday, and so hopefully, it will not get out of the Senate. And the reason why we're considering ourselves as the firewall is that these... The House members and Senate members have introduced the exact same pieces of legislation that seek to roll back the good things that the House and Senate have done over the course of the last two to four years, so in education specifically. And so we have already addressed the bill that Delegate Sewell mentioned. We've addressed the charter schools issue where we're recommending that that legislation not be reported, and it's not... And one of the questions that was raised when the bill came up had to do with, well, we want to take this money and out of the failing schools and put it into these charter schools. And my question to the secretary was, help me understand, if you're going to take the money out of these failing schools and put it into charter schools, what happens to the failing school?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I'm still waiting on the answer. Okay, so why not take those resources that you're taking from this public school that you're calling a failing school and put it into that failing school so that it can no longer be a failing school, you know? So don't hand me this, we're not using public dollars, you know, to create... And I agree with Dr. Underwood, you are privatizing schools with public dollars. That's exactly what you're doing. And as Delegate Born indicated, this is not new. You know, it was tried previously, and those lab schools that were created previously have all closed. And it is, as we asked the question, is this sustainable funding? And the answer was no, it's one-time funding. Okay, so if you create these lab schools, so what happens when the money runs out? You know, the money's gone, you know, and you can no longer sustain these schools. So what's the point, you know, other than to say that you're creating something innovative and new that is absolutely... Makes absolutely no sense. Put the resources into public schools if you think they're failing so that they can discontinue failing. And I believe, and I can't remember his name, Dr., the head of the VEA, hit it right on the head. All of this stuff was happening pre-COVID. So don't act all brand-new on us now, you know? All of this stuff was happening before COVID, and now this school-to-prison thing was happening before COVID. So, you know, put all the resources in public schools that you weren't putting in there before, you know, and, you know, address public education, you know, resources now, you know, and put it into charter schools and into lab schools and saying that this is still public education makes absolutely no sense. And to say that we are removing all efforts of diversifying governor's schools, you know, which is what legislation is out there now, you know, makes, you know, uh-uh, that's not going to fly either.
You're absolutely right, and I know that much of what has been proposed legislatively this session may not make sense, but what definitely makes sense is your leadership in the Senate and the leadership of Delegate Sewell and Delegate Born. So thank you. We want you to stick around. At this point, I am excited to bring back up my fellow moderator, Tracy, as well as the rest of our panelists. Tracy, hasn't this... This has been a phenomenal evening so far, hasn't it?
It has, it really has, and we really appreciate both of sets of our panelists setting the record straight on quite a few issues.
Yeah, we are just so really blessed to have such a rock star panel, many of whom represent our fine organizations and all that our organizations have stood for over a century. So I see we have Dr. Underwood back, Dr. Fetterman as well. I'm not sure if there are others that may be missing. I'm sure that our team will take care of that. Dr. Underwood, you said something very interesting in the chat box, and I think it's really important that we share that, and I know that we have some questions that are going to be popping up, and while those questions are popping up, Dr. Underwood, why don't you talk about the question I had about bipartisan? Is there any good bipartisan legislation as it relates to education? Dr. Underwood?
Thanks, Daquan. Senator Locke hit it right on the head. She said no. She said for some, you know, there is none. But what we know is that it's all about common sense. And in 2020, the Virginia Dems passed Senate Bill 1303 that I put in the chat, which requires each school board to offer in-person instruction and follow CDC guidelines. That is common sense, and we have seen how that piece of legislation was met with incredible bipartisan support on both sides of the aisle and all in between that continuum because all of us wanted our kids in school, but we wanted to do it safely and follow the science. And now, for some reason, even that's not good enough, and that's being attacked in a very partisan way. So it seems like, you know, we're darned if we do and darned if we don't because we have one side trying to say, let's follow the science and let's have common sense legislation that meets the needs of everyone, which is equity. We have another side that is just argumentative to be argumentative, and now wants to take equity out of the entire conversation and replace it with a disingenuous version of opportunity. And as we all know, and we think about Dr. King, you know, from... In his last work, From Chaos to Community, there's an urgency of now, and we have to think about that common sense legislation and remedy the systemic inequities like redlining that created the inequity in public schools in the first place and the funding inequities that I think the Secretary of Education was referring to, which in all fairness, you could use critical race theory to really examine the way redlining was used to create inequitable school systems in schools where one school received funding and one didn't, so that you can come up with solutions like funding those failing schools from a public school perspective as opposed to privatizing education. It's called giving people what they need to survive and thrive, and so in 2020, we had bipartisan support. So where did that go, I ask?
Well, it's clearly gone with the wind, but I'm grateful that we have standing as the brick wall folks on this call that are legislating and leading on behalf of Virginia's children. Now, before we answer the questions that are in the chat box, I know there are a lot of folks on Facebook and YouTube that are watching us. You're enjoying this conversation. We want you to go ahead and click Like and click Share right now. Share this to your profile so that other folks that may not be on this video can see the replay, can get engaged in this extremely important and lively discussion. So go ahead and click Like and click Share right now, and also, after you've done that, I want you to go ahead and put a thumbs up in the comment section. Let us know that you shared it so we can go ahead and continue. Tracy, are there any questions that are coming through in the chat so far?
It looks like we had at least one question that's been elevated, and I'm so glad that it was, and that was, there's been a change or a transition from diversity, equity, and inclusion to diversity, opportunity, and inclusion. And so can any of our panelists speak to what you all are hearing? What does this opportunity mean and why this change and this transition away from equity?
So I'll say something briefly. You know, when you talk about opportunity, don't talk to me about opportunity for a select minority. Talk to me about opportunity for the collective majority, and that is some of the Black and Brown people, too. So when you talk about parents having a choice, why are you only talking to the parents who share your political view? That's not an inclusive Virginia. So if we're going to do what is right and what is best for everybody, then bring some Black and Brown people to the table. And I personally, for me as an individual, I am tired of seeing all of these photo ops with the governor with nothing but lily-white people. I'm tired of it.
When I asked the question, when that bill came... Well, the bill died, but anyway, when the issue of changing the name came up, I said, what do you mean by opportunity? Just tell me what that means. I was told, we want to be inclusive of all Virginians. I said, okay, so are you telling me that the word equity is not inclusive of all Virginians? So an opportunity is? So define for me the difference between equity not being inclusive of all Virginians and opportunity is. I said, so define that. I said, so define that for me. And then I got the deer in the headlights. You know, because I don't understand the difference between opportunity meaning all Virginians and equity not. And because, you know, I never got the definition or the, you know, why opportunity versus equity.
Senator Locke, I think you know why they chose that.
You know.
I know you don't ask, ask questions, you don't, you don't already know the answer.
That's right, I got that from my lawyer friend, Jeff Burn. So, so that's why it, you know, passed by indefinitely.
And Delegate Born and Senator Locke, you can't have opportunity without giving people what they need to access that opportunity, and that is equity. If I'm two feet tall and want to see over a 10-foot fence, what do I need to access the view over the fence? I could use a ladder. I can get technology to see through the fence. Or I could use a dagum sledgehammer and knock down the dagum fence. Well, in education, culturally competent educators provide learners the ability for critical thinking as opposed to what to think. We give learners what they need, equity, to access academic achievement and problem-solving engagement and success. But culturally incompetent educators take words like opportunity to whitewash the idea that inequity was created on purpose to deny issues of equity, or they call equity not important, or they call themselves allies while dismantling or ignoring the, the white supremacy in plain sight. And so we've got to understand that there's nothing wrong with the word opportunity, right? We want opportunities for all, that's in law. But how do we get there? It's through the road of equity.
Thank you all for your commentary. I want to, go right ahead, Delegate Born, and then we're going to jump in with another question that we have elevated by one of our students, and we want to ensure that his question is raised.
Yeah, I just, I had a conversation with some folks who, who would, would have us switch equity to opportunity, and I gave them this example. I said, every kid in Richmond has the opportunity to go explore and see all of the wonders that is the James River. But that opportunity is not equitable. Not every kid has a car. Not every kid has been instructed on how to be safe down by the river. All those things are equitable resources that are needed in certain communities and for cer- certain kids that other kids just get by their privilege. Not saying they got it or not, but, but that was just the example I used because, because equity and opportunity in these contexts mean very, very different things.
Absolutely, and we appreciate you elevating that very specific example. We know that equity and opportunity certainly have some very specific differences. And Senator Locke, to you for elevating the questions of what is the difference, and you, Dr. Underwood, as well, for simply clarifying that you can't have opportunities without centering equity. There is a question that was elevated by one of our student leaders, Elijah, who I believe is joining us this evening, and I would love it if we can bring his question back up. Elijah Lee, and so let's see if the green room can assist us in bringing that question back up to the screen.
And while we're bringing that question up, I see that a lot of you have shared over, 91 of you have shared it. Let's get that up to 100. So go ahead and share this if you haven't already while we get that question up on the screen. Don't forget to click like as well.
Let's see, and it looks like we have so many likes, it's covered up your question, Elijah, so we're going to ask if you can elevate that question once more. Again, Elijah is a student leader who has certainly leaned in and made his voice heard, very active in engaging with our legislators, with the administration, and ensuring that, again, the voices of he and his peers remain centered in this conversation. So we'll give Elijah one more moment to see if we can get that question back. Okay, it looks like we're having a hard time getting that question back, but that's okay. We'll turn back to the green room to see if there are any others. Wonderful, we have a question from Sylvia Johnson. So putting more money into failing schools makes more sense. Why is the money a one-time shot? Study the areas that the students are failing in and provide monies to those things to combat those failures. And so it sounds like the question is more so a budgetary question. Why are we, it sounds like perhaps using a patchwork versus supporting those schools that are failing in a more sustainable manner? And so I'll turn to our legislators to perhaps talk to funding in our schools and how it's directed.
I mean, I'll jump in here. So I think the one-time slug of money that was referenced, I believe, was specifically tied to this half-baked proposal about lab schools and charter schools, and, and that's what Senator Locke was referring to. Typically, we fund, we fund our public schools on an ongoing basis. It's not just one-time money. But the way that we fund education, I think, is broken. I don't know whether the good gentleman from the VEA would agree that the local composite index needs to be scrapped and redone and all that, but that is a, that is going to be a Herculean task. But what we have to do is, is put the money where the resources are most needed and, and specifically target those, those appropriations so that we know that, that if there are more, for example, kids who, who aren't on grade level, we need to invest more in, in reading. And, you know, the same goes true with math and science. We know that, you know, that the, the cap, there's an artificial cap on our support staff, and so we're talking about the counselors and social workers, you know, all those people who are so important to the, to the health and, and wealth of a, of a particular school, but we got a cap on those, and, and it's putting more stress strain on our teachers, administrators. So we've, we've, we also need to lift that support cap, but, but I think Senator Locke hit the nail on the head when, when she called out that it's one-time spending for these, these lab schools. And it's pretty funny, well, it's not funny, but it, but it is a little interesting and almost hypocritical that someone who would consider themselves a fiscal conservative would be wanting, proposing using one-time money for ongoing expenses, which we've all seen, those of us who are old enough to have seen it, in Virginia, puts us in a really bad financial position, and, and one of the things that we do is manage our money and run this state well from a fiscal perspective, and I think this would, this would be a, a, a blow to that, to that reputation.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Delegate Born, for that. And really, thank you to all, each and every one of our panelists. Has this not been a rock star panel this evening? I don't know about you, but I have learned a lot. I've gained a lot of new information. And also, this has been an exciting opportunity for us to challenge our way of thinking and to hear from varied perspectives. As you know, both Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated are nonpartisan, non-political organizations. However, we do believe in making sure that we empower and support our communities by providing informational and educational events just as this. So of course, we want to make sure that we give that disclaimer. Tracy, did you enjoy yourself this evening?
I did indeed, I did indeed. As we work to close things out this evening, we just want to thank our panelists once more for taking the time to join us this evening to elevate their knowledge and their expertise, and again, demonstrate their commitment to our children. A couple of things that I want to leave you all with this evening. Number one, stay connected to this issue. Please don't walk away tonight and let this be the only time you engage around these issues. And so I want to remind you, connect to your local PTA, okay? So be sure to connect to the PTA. Show up to that school board being and recognize that you have the opportunity to actually elevate your voice and offer comments. We want you to follow your legislators as well. Go ahead and subscribe to their newsletters. Delegate Born is actually my delegate, and so I do receive correspondence from him, and I know exactly what he's working on to ensure that my issues, my concerns are being elevated to his colleagues. We encourage you to also visit the governor's website. We want you to sign up for those press releases so that you can stay abreast of actions coming out of the administration and the Secretary of Education's office. We also want you to use the opportunity to connect to those state boards and commissions that are doing this work. Remember, you have the governor and the cabinet, then you have those agencies and those boards that are leaning into these efforts. You have the Board of Education, you have the Virginia African-American Advisory Board, the Virginia Latino Advisory Board, Council on Women, the Asian Advisory Board, and the LGBTQ+ Advisory Board. Remember, those meetings are free and open to the public, and yes, you can attend and you should. There is also the opportunity for public comment. And last and certainly not least, go ahead and follow the legislative session. It takes place every year. It starts in January, it typically goes through about February or March or so. And so follow these bills that we're talking about and stay connected. We thank you all so much for joining us this evening, and again, don't forget to use that hashtag, VA First Fam. Daquan, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I think the only thing left to say is we'll see you tomorrow. If you thought tonight was great, we'll see you tomorrow. You can, if you were watching the replay or this was shared with you, you can visit VAFirstFam.com, and that'll be on your screen shortly, so you can register for tomorrow's session on Monday, February the 7th. Thanks so much and good night.